I'd like to reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 26, 2020, and we will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
All right, all those in favor, Rita?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, board reports. Rita?
I want to thank Scott Zerbiak, Mr. Zerbiak, Director of Special Ed, along with the principals and also the IT department. I've heard back from several parents of special education students, and they have already received their laptops and hotspots. So, thank you so much for everyone that made that possible for them, because some very happy parents. Thank you.
Mary?
I attended the virtual town hall meeting, which was held on the 19th of August, which Superintendent Smith hosted. And we had a, our special guest was Dr. Brewster. She talked about all the health issues. Dr. Marr talked about zirconias and Aids, zirconias, and independent learning. Ms. Baughner, she talked about the schedules for the middle and the high school. Wesley McGregor talked about how to set up your device, and he made it so easy. Ms. Doran, she talked about the ordering meals with the Nutrislice school menus, My School Bucks, where you can put money on your account, My School App. When she talked about the free and reduced application was online. Attendance Expectations was talked about by Ms. Long and Schoolology, Mr. Smith. And I want to welcome back the teachers to the new school year. They came back on August 24th. And to welcome back CPCS students, Chesapeake Public Charter Schools, they started earlier. So, all this information is on YouTube. The citizens can go to the SMCPS, click on YouTube, and you can see all the previous town hall meetings. Everything you want to know is right there on the school system website. And I also appreciate all the letters that we receive from citizens about different issues. It's good to know that they participate, put right in the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Office. Thank you.
Let's see, Jim, do you have anything to report?
No, nothing to report today, thank you.
Okay, Nagina?
Yes, so within Leonardtown High School, I start as the president of the Student Government Association. And I've been working alongside my advisor, Mr. Burns, to get everything in order for incoming members. And I have also joined the Be Your Best You team, so the Be Your Best You videos can be found on YouTube. And they're a way in which students are able to give other students advice and tips on how to succeed in high school. And this year, the plan is to get the rest of the Slack Steering Committee members involved in the making of these videos as well, so that's going to be very exciting.
Okay. Kathy?
I participated, if you will, in the Zoom meeting of the first day for new teachers. And I want to say kudos to Dr. Smith and to Mrs. Bailey, who both really hit the mark with their comments to new staff. I was really struck by the enthusiasm of the new staff. And while everyone was participating via Zoom, it really was not much different than the beginning of school that Dr. Smith does for new teachers each year, where he sends out a survey and asks them all kinds of great questions. I really loved, sort of, the theme that I took away from all of it was, he put up a picture of a footprint and asked if they knew where it was from. And it was the first step that Neil Armstrong made on the moon. And he encouraged each one of them to make their mark in a positive way with our students and others. So, it was a lot of fun, thank you very much. It went by very quickly, and I think you both really just knocked it out of the park. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, I did bring greetings. My word of the day was noise, the definition and what you needed to do to drown out all the noise and focus on yourself and your students. The rest of my time I'm going to use for my public service announcement, for all of the parents out there, Hack is open, please check your emails. Whatever the structure will be like for your individual school for the first day or the first week of school, will be coming out directly from the principals in whatever communication they have, whether it be smore, whether it be a call out. I've had several questions about what's the first week of school going to look like. I know it's already out there for Chopticon High School. So, and it's feeding off of Dr. Smith's town hall about the different blocks for synchronous and asynchronous learning. So, please check your email. There's not another good way without a local daily newspaper down here to get the information out to everyone. So, it's going to have to be a little bit on the parents to make sure that you are checking your emails. I can't tell you that it would be on Facebook unless someone specifically posts it. I can't say it's going to be on Twitter, so we're going to have to go back to the old standard emails. So, more information will be coming on exactly what Monday will look like for everyone in the individual schools. So, please, please check that and don't just, you know, scroll through and check your spam folders. All right, I'm done. Scott, all you. I stole your thunder.
Yeah, well, I mean, that really is, you know, we've been doing a great deal of work behind the scenes that people haven't seen, and now it is a time to preview our work. Yes, we had our new teachers come in last week. They were the first to get the real view and start working within the Schoolology platform. We finished all the schedules and merged it with Schoolology on last Friday, so that when our teachers did return on the 24th, while they had that day professionally to re-acclimate themselves to a building, they had been out of the building for 165 days. They came back into their classroom, they started setting things up, they started kind of organizing their space. And then for the remainder of this week, it's professional development, pretty much every single day on all the different facets of Schoolology, the learning management system, how to use all of the tools within the platform, and how to reorient yourself to instructing in a digital world through the program specifically of Google Meet. And it is, you know, it is a skill that has to be developed, and it's only developed by doing. So, they've been doing a lot of that work this week. Hack turns on today, so everybody can see what their day is laid out, how the periods of their day go, what the classes they have, and who their teachers are, their homeroom teachers, their classroom teachers. And on Saturday morning, Schoolology goes live. So, on Saturday morning, you'll be able to go in and actually see all of the content platform information for all of the particular courses. And I'm going to switch now, I'm going to do some screen sharing. I am going to, let's see what we can do. I think we're going to do this first. Let's see, that should be it. Is that it? Oh, Mr. Davis is still waiting to come back in again. Let me sign back in, apologies. There we go. Let me present this. So, Superintendent's Report for the 26th. Yes, we joined all of our teachers, they came in, there was a whole bunch of tweeting that went on on the other side. The teachers, although we couldn't gather them all together, they did go to their home schools, where they gathered together, some of them in the media center, some of them, if they were small groups, just with the principal to go through their day. We asked them, we talked about the fact that they were living history. We talked about Neil Armstrong and Apollo 11 and touching down in the sea of tranquility and leaving that mark. And more importantly, we talked about moonshot thinking, the thinking that got us to be able to land a human being on the moon with the millions of can'ts, they found, you know, the way to can. How do we figure out, how do we solve every problem that's placed before us? Because what we've seen in the 165 days since we closed schools, there is a whole host of things that we've been told that we can't do. And what we have to figure out is what we can and what we can do that's in the best interest of our students. And it was, I mean, it's really amazing, the kids, the teachers are back. All last week and all this week, we've been distributing materials. So, we've been handing out laptops and textbooks and materials, and we've had parents coming into all of our buildings. And I'd like to just thank all of the parents for their patience. Keep in mind that we are distributing about 9,000 devices over the next, over this last past week and this week and moving into the next. We still have over 8,500 devices that are due to come in, as well as about 1,500 iPads that they, we don't have them in hand right now, we don't have them in hand because we couldn't order them until we had the money available. We didn't have the money available until July 1. So, that's why we don't have them in hand. But they are coming in, as soon as they come in, they're formatted so that they're going to be able to be distributed. So, we just appreciate everybody's patience and their willingness to come in. I will tell you that all the parents who've been coming in to pick up materials, they have been gracious and enthusiastic, and it has been overall an exceptionally positive experience. You're absolutely right, this week, all the teachers came back to work, and they came back into the building, and everybody is getting accustomed to spending a very large portion of their day masked and figuring out how to interact with one another and how best to, so many of us have found out that we have very fashionable masks that look really great, that go with our outfits, and it's like, that's awesome, but they're super hot and sweaty, and when you wear them for an hour, you're like, I can't, this is something. So, now we've gotten to the point where we're understanding the value of these loop masks that hospitals use, and there's a reason why, obviously, I'm speaking to two fantastic nurses, they know that there's a reason why people wear these. You can actually wear them for long periods of your day, and that's what we're seeing. We have about 40,000 of these right now, and we continue to bump up our PPE supplies. But, every single school that Dr. Montgomery and I visited, and we've gone through 25 so far, we still have three more left, we're going to visit over the next two days, everybody has been gracious and given us the school-specific mask. So, I've got a whole bin that I'm going to have to put in my car, so as I travel up to the school, I put on the appropriately, you know, I don't want to roll into Great Mills with a Leonardtown mask or the, so, one more thing to think about. But the people have, you know, it's, people feel good to be back, there's, of course, there's anxiety, absolutely. And this new normal requires a great deal of acclamation, but teachers are, they draw strength from one another. They are the most incredibly creative, problem-solving group that you've ever seen, and when they get together, it's just, it's really, it's really a fantastic thing. So, everybody's out there, as Mrs. Bailey has stated, all the information has been sent out, and it's been sent out in multimodal ways. You've got phone outs, you've got emails, you've got smores, you've got tweets that have the smores put in. There's a lot of information out there, and we're making sure that all of the schools are then transitioning all of that to their webpages as well. So, in the event that you don't answer your phone, or you don't tweet, or you don't read your email, if you found yourself at the end of this week and saying to yourself, well, geez, doesn't school start next week? You can go and visit the individual school website and see a great deal of information there. But, it does require active participation on the part of parents and students. We know you're getting the messages because thousands of you have come to the school to pick up materials. I do want to, this is embedded, this is embedded for me, I hope this works, I think this is Spring Ridge Middle Schools, and there's a whole, there's a whole host of these. Spring Ridge's was just really, was really quite cute, so I'm going to share that with you. Quite a group. Quite a group, you know, they are really, they're just, they're, they are just really, they're just really working it. And there's other, Janet Fowler, Principal at Greenview Knowles, she did a TikTok type stuff with them cleaning the buildings, and it really is, there's, you know, there's certainly a lot of, there's a lot of enthusiasm for us getting back to being together and serving kids. If, so we go back to, if you haven't answered your phone, or looked at your email, or gone to Twitter, or looked at the school system, your individual school website, WW, all you have to remember is SMCPS. That's all you have to do, put SMCPS in any, in any Google search, it'll come to our website. Our website has all of this information as well, the schools are linked on the top. And for your individual children, we've created a new button, because we, the button seemed to work really well, especially if you go to your phone. If you go to your phone, there'll be a big, huge button that says, "Online Instruction", you click on that button, when you click on that button, it'll take you right to the Schoolology log on. When you click on that, it takes you right into the platform, and all of the information and all the stuff is there. Children should be pretty able to navigate it. And just in case you're not sure, we've made a video for that too, and Nagina can't wait, Miss Ori can't wait, because she's one of the co-stars in it. So, with that, Be Your Best You, Be Your Best You, A Student's Guide to Schoolology.
Hi guys, it's Sophia from Chopticon.
I'm Nagina from Leonardtown.
And we're all curious as to how online learning will look this year. But don't worry, we're going to take you through our new distance learning platform, Schoolology.
Schoolology is an interactive learning platform that allows students to do their work, access their grades, and connect with teachers. So, let's get started.
So, how to get to Schoolology? First, you're going to go to SMCPS.org, and from there, you're going to want to hit Sign In with Clever. And once you're signed in, Schoolology will automatically appear on your Clever homepage. And it'll take you to the beginning of your Schoolology experience.
The main page of Schoolology is the Course Dashboard, where you can access all of your classes and the periods of those classes, as well as the teachers.
And once you see all your classes, you can also rearrange how they are in the schedule so that they align with the actual schedule, because they are not in any particular order when you start Schoolology. And next, we're going to want to look at the special class called Student Information. This will be your one-stop shop for everything you need to know about Schoolology, whether it be how to navigate the platform, how Google works with Schoolology, or any questions about Google in general. So, once you get here, there's going to be about three different folders that you can do, based on the basics of Schoolology, more advanced things you can do with it, and just helping you navigate the platform for your first week of school. So, Nagina, how will I know if anything changes in my class period?
So, in the upper corner, you can find the notification bell. In the notification bell, you will receive messages from SMCPS, as well as your teachers, for new assignments, or even new information.
So, the new thing we are all learning is that our grade books are through Schoolology. So, while Hack is still there for school testing with the state and county, the rest of your classwork will be through Schoolology grading. Some will grade automatically, some will be graded by teachers. But when you or your parents want to check out how you're doing, all you have to do is click on the Grades tab and hit Grade Report, and it will show you all the grades you have in that class. Speaking of classes, how do I navigate my classwork?
So, on your Course Dashboard, you can click on your class. This student has Period 1 Spanish 3 and Module 0, you can find at the top of the page. This is your introduction to the class and the coursework. And as you continue, more modules will be seen, and in those modules, there will be learning sets. And you click on a learning set, you can find your assignments.
So, as you can see, there's a assignment right up there, and you'll get the feel of which assignments your teachers have based on how your teacher has set up their Schoolology classroom. Some may be forums and questions, some may be essays, and some might be a lot of unit tests. It just depends what each class looks like for you. We still do have one-hour lunch during our regular schedule. So, what am I supposed to do with my one-hour lunch, Nagina?
During your one-hour lunch, you can still participate in the clubs that you would in school. At the top panel, you can see Groups, and once you click on Groups, this is where you will access your clubs.
Your classes will be in two different categories, synchronous and asynchronous. Synchronous learning means that your teacher is live and active during your class period, or that you are actively in a Google Meet with your teacher where you must attend. But don't forget, attendance is still recorded through Hack, so you must show up every day for school.
Asynchronous learning is when a teacher is not active, but you have to contact them through office hours.
What would you suggest to students coming back into the school year, Nagina, with online learning?
Best advice would be to maintain the current school schedule that you are in. That way, you will be in fast practice for when you're ready for synchronous learning.
We hope you all enjoy online schooling, and we hope to see you back in the classroom very soon.
Bye.
So, that is the end of my official presentation. For where we are, all of these, all of those videos, they're going to be then pushed out by social media and on our webpage, and pushed out through Twitter and through our Instagram feed. And as we get further into the platform, and the students really start to explore what goes on in each one of the classes, we'll continue with Be Your Best You, and have informative videos highlighting all of our incredible Slack students throughout the year. There's a lot, there's a lot of information out there, there's been, there's been a great deal of work that has gone on. It really, I think, I think people are going to be a little bit set back by how much information is actually, is actually available. But I can't say enough about the work that has gone on, the preparations that people have undertaken, so that we are ready to roll that, roll that out on Monday, August 31st. So, with that, any questions that you may have, that's, please make sure that you keep on forwarding them. We are going to be doing a town hall meeting next Wednesday, and then we'll have a board meeting, and then we'll have a town hall, and then we'll have a board meeting, and then we'll have a town hall. The next town hall, very specifically, is going to be about technology, technology, troubleshooting, and special education, and how we are supporting our students through this virtual learning platform. And with that, thank you very much.
And I will say hats off to all of our school administrators who have been handing out computers. I would say there's a high school in a neighboring county where it was, there was a two-and-a-half hour line to pick up your computers last night. So, and that was not handing out IDs, that was simply going up and having someone hand you a computer in a bag. So, hats off to
I will tell you that it's
all the work that has gone in for our students.
It's administrators, it's support staff, it's our safety and security assistants, and it is our parents very much paying attention to what's out there and arriving during the pre-arranged scheduled time slot. Makes it, makes it a lot easier.
Two-and-a-half hours in line in your car.
It's a long time.
Not in this county, good job. So, all right, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is on grading policies IK, IK-A, and IK-B. Do we have anyone who signed up to comment on these public hearings? Okay, no. Okay. So, with that, we will close that public hearing. The second one is Student Dress Code JFDA Policy. Are you public comment? Not public hearing, comment. If you would like to speak in front of the public hearing, you're more than welcome. Okay, so our first one is Dr. Janice Walthour.
Good evening, Board members. I'm speaking on behalf of the St. Mary's County and AAACP in support of the revised dress code policy. We've been advocating for the changes, the change that states language, images, or symbolism on attire that offend, demean, or promote hatred toward an individual, person, or group based on a person's race, color, religion, ethnicity, national origin, ancestry, gender, sexual orientation, or disability are disruptive and detrimental to learning. Symbols or messages generally accepted to promote intolerance, hate, racial slurs, e.g. Confederate flags, swastikas, KKK, may not be worn, visible, or displayed. It became an emergency priority during the racial unrest that took place three years ago at a football game at Leonardtown High School, when Great Mills High School students' parents and supporters were harassed by a student wearing Confederate flag symbols on his jacket and waving the American flag. Other incidents of racial slurs and harassment were reported by others during the game. Great Mills High School players were escorted to their buses for security reasons. With the racial divide taking place now, and many blatant displays of racism, we need this change now, and we are very encouraged that the superintendent, staff, and community work together to make this a reality. Please continue to review, revise, and develop policies that make our schools hate-free. I know that you have received a petition from students and the community to ensure that a SMCPS education enables students to understand their roles and responsibilities as citizens who live in a democracy designed to be free of discrimination due to race and the privileges afforded to some because of their race or gender. Petitioners are advocating for a system that provides equity for all regardless of their race, gender, or other characteristics. A system committed to alleviating social injustices like the ones that are plaguing our community and country today. Please approve the revisions to the Dress Code JFdar. It is aligned with the equity policy that you approved last year. In these unsettled times of racial divide and concern for equity and social justice in our schools and community, it is critical that we provide a school environment that is safe and hate-free. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right. Is there any speaker for the public hearing? So, that public hearing on Student Dress Code JFDA is, the policy is now closed. And we have no public comment who have signed up. So, we will continue on, and may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda consisting of the approval of minutes of August 12, 2020, personnel, teachers. There are no personnel administrative and supervisory. American Reading Company, IRLA funds, and Imagine Learning, as presented.
Do I have a second?
My second.
Roll call vote, Mary?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Rita?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
And myself is aye. All right, tonight we have no action items, and we have one information item, which is the presentation that was referred to last week during our, or two weeks ago, I guess, during our
Work session.
Work session on the dress code policy. So, we pull that up. We'll have our IT support there, and Dr. Smith?
All right, and we have Ms. Cheryl Long, I did see her admitted, and Mr. BJ Dothard, who are with us to present. I'm assuming that Mr. I'm assuming that Mr., is Ms. Long starting?
I am here. Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith. Tonight, Mr. Dothard and I are here to present revisions to the Student Dress Code. Most recently, in the month of June and July, we brought together a dress code committee. Mr. Dothard and I were the co-facilitators for that. We had 20 members on that committee represented by both school and district level administrators, teachers, students, parents, and representatives from the Education Association of St. Mary's County and the St. Mary's Association of School Administrators, as well as the community. During those committee meetings, we reconsidered both the policy and the current regulations. And actually, that's where the dress code itself is housed in the regulation. This, this statement that you see here is housed in our, you'll see that in our policy, and it is also part of the regulation. This really was the focus of most of our conversations during our, during our meetings. Really, it was through the voices of the students, the teachers and school administrators that we heard often that the clothing in question did not even cause a disruption in the school, but it was listed on, the dress code is prohibited. So with that said, they were finding that teachers were referring students maybe whose shorts were shorter than their fingertips or who had thin straps or, or things that were located, things that were stated in the dress code to administrators. And administrators were spending a lot of time, you know, talking to students or investigating when in fact it didn't cause a disruption. So through those conversations, it brought us back continually to this statement, and we really focused on the fact that is it causing disruption of the instructional program? Or is it creating a potential safety or health hazard? We, our discussions included considerations for equity, diversity, and inclusion for all students as well. And like I said, we kept coming back to that statement. So you see, Mr. Dothard is going to share the revised dress code, and when he goes through it, you'll see the connection there. Mr. Dothard?
All right. This, one of the first things, one of the things that we addressed, as you see here, it says following, the following may not be worn. The old dress codes stopped at worn. We add to be visible or displayed. Clothing, clothing displaying a, or suggesting profanity, sexual activity, geographic images, words, or innuendos, weapons, drugs, alcohol, or drug paraphernalia, violence, or tobacco products, a clothing with identifiable gang or crew representation or paraphernalia. And then this was another one that we added. Symbols or messages generally accepted to promote intolerance, hate, racial slurs, for example Confederate flags, swastika, Who Cuts Clan, or KKK. And we were able to identify those things from different court cases that have been proved to show that, like the examples that we had. We had court cases that showed that those had been identified as, as things that promoted intolerance or hate in our justice system. And then another, next thing. Head coverings may only be worn indoors so long as student's face is visible, and it does not interfere with instruction or student safety. Now that's going to be a big change. One of the things, another thing we continually addressed was the fact that does having a hat on in class prevent you from learning? And we also talked about being able to prepare students for college and for the workforce, and we all determined that in college we all did see students sitting in classrooms with hats on on campus and inside buildings, and we didn't feel that. So we wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that. Another thing, shoes, shoes must be worn that are safe for all activities, and that was already there. Official St. Mary's County Public Schools athletic uniforms may be allowed, may be allowed at the discretion of the coach and school administrator. We added, and that the school administrator could be a part of that decision before it was at the discretion of the coach. And then for the next one, student dress for school-sponsored activities must be in compliance with the student, with the student dress code. What we changed on that one, instead of school-sponsored activities, it said mixers or informal dances. We changed that to school-sponsored activities.
So, thank you, BJ, thank you, Mr. Dothard. And I just want to impress too, something else that came about in our discussions was when we, when we looked at the language that was in the dress code, we thought about, are we enforcing, or are we, is that talking really about our personal beliefs and our values? Or does it really cause a disruption or safety issue? So we really had some very good conversations with all folks about, about that because there, you know, certainly we bring forth our personal beliefs and values as well. So I feel like we had some very poignant conversations about that. So how are we communicating the changes? The beginning of August, we had a presentation for the administrators, and then they in turn present to their school staff the changes. Students will see it in the back-to-school handbook presentations that will be shared with them next week. And also, a letter to students and parents and guardians will be distributed. And then the information, of course, is located on the Student Services website for parents and for community. Okay, with that, any questions or comments?
Mary?
I appreciate the work that you, Ms. Long and Mr. Dothard did working with the Dress Code Committee. They had 20 members and three meetings. And also, I appreciate the number of letters that we received from the community about the dress code. And from that, they were from a variety of people. Some of the emails the Board of Ed received were from retired SMCPS teachers, NAACP, the community organizers, a realtor, a president of a civic organization, a grandmother, a PTA board member, a St. Mary's County government employee, parents, and community volunteers and community supporters. So we had a variety of input, and all of them were in support of the dress code with those amended changes.
Nagina?
I have nothing, no.
Oh, okay. Nagina, do you have anything?
No questions, thank you.
Rita?
Thank you so much for working on the dress code. I really appreciate everyone's input and putting this together and reading this ahead of time. I did, you know, reviewing this before I came in. I saw about the head coverings, and I was trying to figure out where that came from. And Mr. Dothard, you did state, you know, your reasoning behind it. I have to say, I'm not in agreement with the head covering being worn indoors. There's several reasons. Yes, it can be a distraction. You know, when somebody goes and flicks the hat off of somebody else and, you know, you know, the horse play. And hopefully, that won't happen. But I'm also concerned with, I know you said there's no gang-related paraphernalia or any, you know, any sign symbols on any type of clothing. But also, you know, some of the gangs might wear a particular sports team or have their hat in a particular manner. And I'm just concerned with that, you know, down the road. It might not be right this second, but as time goes on, once we start allowing it, it's going to be hard to undo that. To undo and not allow the students, if we find there's a problem with it. So I'm not, I'm, I'm in favor of everything else except for the head coverings being worn inside.
Mrs. Weaver, thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate your insight and your feedback on that. You know, definitely is a, is a different change for us, and it is going to be, you know, educating our students and our staff too, our staff and our administrators. And it is going to take us back to that disruption. And hopefully, you know, I did hear you say that, like, we're not looking for disruptions, but, you know, unfortunately, if there is something that, you know, that goes awry or whatever, it will come out that way. And, you know, and teachers, administrators and teachers as well have relationships with students, and, you know, it would be, you know, probably in their best interest for to have conversations with those students. If they feel like coming in the building, maybe they see a gesture or something that leads them to believe, you know, in a positive way or a supportive way, maybe have a conversation with the student. I know, Mr. Dothard, we had talked about that in our committee as well, that it's, you know, it's so important, the relationships that we have with our students and, you know, the roles that those administrators take. So thank you. I appreciate you sharing that.
I would like to add that I do agree that that, that can be issues that we could, that we could address, that we would have to address. But I do feel that as of right now, it's not something that we've, that we've dealt with as far as hats representing different gangs. One thing that we have found is that we have kids that are missing valuable instruction in the classroom because they're wearing a hat or a hood for whatever reason. And, and it's, if kids are going to, kids, if kids want to wear a hat to represent a gang or whatever group that they're with, if they can't wear a hat to school, they're still going to find other ways to represent that. And it could be in the color of a shirt. It could be in, you know, in their socks. It could be in various different ways, which we would have to address and, and we would have to address regardless. But I also would like to add that, that, that rule, that head covering rule, we did pull from, that is a rule that's already standing in place in Charles County. It was, it was put in, I'm not sure when it was put in place, but it was put in place for all of last school year, for sure, because we took it from their active handbook.
Okay, thank you for your input.
Yeah. Well, the other thing is recognize that there are a lot of reasons why people, why students in particular want to wear a head covering. So it could be, it could be a scarf, it could be a skull cap, it could be whatever reason, some of us have bad hair days. And so we put on a cap or a hat or a scarf, and we go off to work, and we go off to, out in the community, or we go to school. And so when we, when we create a situation where an adult has to have a confrontation with a student over something that hadn't been creating a disruption, but you have now created one. So I walk up to a group of, of boys because I see that they're all wearing some kind of a head covering or they're wearing some kind of a scarf or a skull cap or what have you. That interaction is now me exerting authority over them and creates a dynamic situation where we aren't necessarily, what would be, what would be the purpose? I will tell you this, and it can be a little frustrating for those of us older when working with younger people, and I'm speaking of myself, not anybody else. Our young people are really being raised in a society where they ask questions, where they want to know why you want to do something, or why does that rule exist? Or why does it look just like that? Or why is it okay to do this and not this? And, you know, and Ms. Ori, we definitely see it when we're working with all of our students. They want to know why. And so we always say, well, you don't wear hats in school because if the brim's down, we can't see who you are. And that immediately says, so you assume I'm in, I'm engaging in some kind of a criminal activity? You're trying to, so is everything that we're doing about being able to identify me on a camera? Well, the fact that we're all going to wear masks when we go back to school, that's going to create a heck of a problem. And the second is, we say, because it's a sign of respect. Well, that, that is definitely a part of, of, of a personal belief system, but that might not be the, the, the way the world, the 21st century world is working. So I, this was a really deliberative group that really kind of unpacked and asked the questions, why do each one of the rules exist? And if we can't come up with a really compelling reason as to why it would be disruptive or interfere with somebody's ability to learn, why we would move it forward. As somebody who spent, this is my 30th year, and I will tell you that as a teacher and as an administrator, hats in the hallway consumed an unbelievable amount of time. And for the most part, kids didn't wear them in the class. They'd go into the classroom, and they knew the teachers that didn't like them on, so they'd take them off. But then as soon as they got out in the hall, they put their hat on. And then we would catch them, and they would take their hat off, and they'd turn the corner, and they'd put, it's the hat game. And it consumes a lot of, it consumes a lot of time. And some people take the hat game really seriously, and it escalates into a much larger thing. And when you peel away all the levels, you're like, well, what started it? Well, it started because Nagina was wearing a head scarf, and she's not supposed to. And Nagina just was having a hair day that she, you know, she wanted, she needed to wear a head scarf. So I appreciate all the work. I know that that's, we're going to have lots of questions, we're going to have lots of conversations about hats, but maybe that's a really good thing.
So I, and Ms. Long, you, you refer to this. Is this knocking out the whole shorts, the fingertip thing too?
I couldn't hear that.
The, the, the shorts and the finger, they have to be an inch below your fingertips or whatever. Is that, you alluded to that in your present, or
Yes.
In your words. But I didn't see it specifically on here.
All language about the length of a young lady's pair of shorts and fingertips have been stricken from the reg.
Because we have received numerous comments about that over the years. And as the parent of a teenage girl, it is virtually impossible, unless I buy her a pair of culottes, to have that physically happen.
Especially when you have a child that grows really fast, as I did.
Well, and it also then creates an opportunity where you have the potential for somebody to feel wildly uncomfortable and be put out and be perhaps even body shamed. And, and I know this was a very active discussion amongst the, amongst the group as well.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Okay, no, I think, I think you guys did a lot of work, and I think it was very careful and thought out. And I think a lot of the comments that we've been receiving over the years were all taken into account in order to, to put this, you know, to put this policy in place. And as to, Mrs. Weaver, your point on the hats and the gang paraphernalia, I think, I think we have a pretty well-established relationship with the Sheriff's Department, with the SROs that are in the building. So if there is something that, you know, that comes up in, you know, somewhere in the county where something might be affiliated with it, I'm sure we would be notified, you know,
Yes.
At that point in time, too.
Oh, yes. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So.
Well, so just, this is the regulation under the purview of the superintendent. The policy came before you for first reading. If you, I don't think you've requested any modifications. This has been public comment. It'll come back before you for approval at the next Board of Ed meeting.
Right. Kathy, do you have anything?
Hey, I was just going to say, I really like the fact that you had the in-depth conversation and that you really simplified this. I think the fact that it says dresser grooming, which causes or is likely to cause the disruption of the instructional program or which creates a potential safety or health hazard as determined by the school principal or his or her designee is prohibited. That, that really is it in a nutshell. It's, it shows respect for students, for staff. It's simple. It's easy to have it be consistent. And, and I just think that pulling some of the emotion and, and various beliefs out and stating it in terms of what's the impact on the student and the school and the school day is, is just really the best way for us to go. So I appreciate you bringing this forward. I agree with Mrs. Bailey with respect to the SROs being on top of everything.
Oh, absolutely.
And I count on that continued conversation and that, that continued partnership to make sure that, you know, we are, we are staying in the best place. But I will support the, the policy as it has been written. I think, I think the number of people that had the conversation and the, and the, the diversity of that conversation is a real positive. I don't think I have anything to add to what you've provided for us.
Well, I can, I can take it one step further. So with the, with the virtual learning environment that we're in, we are asking our students for the first time ever to be completely responsible for getting themselves to school on their own and, you know, in front of a computer screen and complete the work, right? Without making sure that, you know, having a parent take them to the bus or whatever. I'm not saying that some kids didn't do that already, but this is I'm not saying that some kids didn't do that already, but this is like mass quantities at this point. So to me, this shows a mutual respect between the students and the administration as to what everyone thinks is, is, is proper. So we're giving, especially, I mean, a lot of this to me, I think, you know, will be with the high school students. It gives them a certain amount of, I guess, allows them to spread their wings a little bit as, and, you know, show their own individuality. And at the same time, since we're asking them to do so much and, you know, be responsible wholly for their own education, starting on Monday with virtual learning, I think this shows the, the respect coming back to them from the administration, so.
Not to be too glib about it, but if you get out of, if you're rolling out of bed to show up in front of your computer to, to be-
You might have a hat on.
Yeah. Bedhead is a real issue.
I'm doomed with my visor on after riding my bike.
There will be, there will be probably-
Visor, sunglasses. Yeah. Those of us with short hair do have some of those issues.
Ponytail and visor.
Yeah.
I can attest.
Hats shall be worn in the virtual world.
Yes.
So, yeah, so I, I mean, I don't know if that was the intent to show that mutual respect back and forth between the students and the administrators, but it certainly, if, by the way you're reading this, it certainly does show that, so.
Absolutely.
All right. Well, it's, it's just an information item, so that's the information.
Anyone have anything else? I'm going to cut Scott off.
No, I just wanted to say thank you very much to Ms. Long and thank you very much to Mr. Dothard. I really do appreciate your leadership every day in so many ways and certainly in this in particular, it was, it was well done.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any board members, you guys have anything else?
No.
All right. Our next meeting is, let's see, September 9th at 9:00 AM after the start of school. So good luck, everyone. Welcome back and we are adjourned.